Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you so much for joining us for the second meeting in September of 2021 of this Metro National Public Schools Board of Education. Before we begin, before we even establish a quorum, I would like to have our new young adult, Angelie, who has recently turned 18, please stand so we can wish you a happy birthday. Yes, happy birthday. She is one of our new student board members. Again, she's still a student, but now she's a young adult, so thank you for joining us at the table, you and Avenezar. All right, we've established a quorum. We have several guests, several important guests in our midst, but I would like to have Mrs. Akers, the principal of Rosebank, if you would not mind, coming up just to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Come on up. If you don't mind, yes, just lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all, and we will kick this over to Dr. Battle for awards and recognitions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening to everyone, board members. We've got a couple of recognitions to share tonight, the first of which is really bittersweet. Robert Fisher has been a tremendous addition to the education community here in Nashville. As Mayor Cooper's Senior Education Advisor and Deputy Chief of Staff, Robert has helped us get a lot of things done during a very challenging time. Many of the gains you've seen us make during the pandemic from increasing salaries so that we now have the best-paid teachers in the state to becoming a one-to-one technology district with the device in the hands of every student. They all have Robert's fingerprints all over them. His mastery of both the big picture and the details has helped move the needle time and time again for our schools. Not surprisingly, Robert has found another wonderful opportunity that suits his skillset and one that will probably have an even bigger impact. He is joining Results for America, a national nonprofit organization that works to help policymakers use data to make critical decisions. We wish Robert great success and proud to present him with our MNPS Service Award in recognition of the excellent and tireless service he has given to our city and our school district over the past year. Thank you for all of the great work, Robert, and please join us up here in front of the board table to recognize you for a moment. Let's give Robert a round of applause. Next up is Megs Middle Magnet School, which got some very exciting news last week. The U.S. Education Secretary Miguel Cardona named Megs a 2021 National Blue Ribbon School in the exemplary High Performance Schools category. Megs is one of just six schools in Tennessee to receive this honor this year. Megs does an excellent job every year of providing a top-notch education that emphasizes not only academic rigor but also social-emotional development. It is a diverse school that draws students from all over Nashville and Davidson County. It makes everyone feel welcome, valued, and known. And they've done all this under some extremely challenging circumstances, I might add. The tornado in March of 2020 did significant damage to Megs. Their roof and other parts of the building and the whole faculty, staff, and student body moved to Graymar Middle School the very next week. And then, three days after that, all of our school buildings had to shut down due to the pandemic. But Megs kept plugging away and doing its thing, no matter where they had to go. We are so proud of the work that Megs has done and continues to do for our students and families, and I'm thrilled to recognize Megs Executive Principal Scott Underwood, who is here with us tonight. So, Dr. Underwood, if you would, please come on up and let us celebrate you and the great work of your school team.
We are so excited to celebrate all of our students, staff, teachers, parents that make MNPS what it is. We will now move on to our Director's Report. We'd love to hear about Vanderbilt University's MNPS Research Practice Partnership.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, it's hard for me to contain my excitement today, so many great celebrations, recognitions, and now a really good launch and kickoff to a partnership, as you mentioned, with Vanderbilt's Peabody College. So today, we're celebrating the official launch of a new research-practice partnership with Vanderbilt University's Peabody College, the Nashville Partnership for Educational Equity Research, also known as Nashville Peer. Here is a key long-term strategy addressing one of our four core tenets, which is to identify and eliminate inequities. As part of the district's results-focused innovation signature initiative, this new partnership with Peabody College will allow us to thoughtfully leverage the incredible talents and resources of one of the top education schools in the country toward our efforts to identify and eliminate inequities. Here, we'll bring together stakeholders from both institutions to identify opportunities where the needs of the district align with the expertise of Vanderbilt researchers, to answer questions that will allow us to make research-backed decisions, to modify policies and/or practices, to identify and eliminate inequities. Questions such as, or as an example under the umbrella of these big questions, what school and community systems and resources are necessary to create equitable conditions for students to excel? How do policies and practices exacerbate or disrupt inequities and student opportunities and outcomes? How can schools build learning opportunities to support all students? Over the past year, representatives from MNPS and Peabody have been meeting to work through the governance, organizational structures, and principles needed to structure such a partnership. This slide that you see on the screen highlights some of the key principles that will guide our new partnership as we build it in the next years ahead. Metro Schools and Peabody College have a long history of cooperation on research. A true research-practice partnership, as we are launching today, represents a big step beyond cooperation. Together, we will develop and pursue a co-designed research agenda focused on equity, specifically targeting the needs and priorities of the district. This joint work is marked shift away from the traditional power dynamics of research, with practitioners deeply and meaningfully involved at every stage of the research cycle. Practitioners will be engaged from setting the agenda, to designing studies, to interpreting results, to making recommendations, and ultimately, planning actions based on the findings. Through the establishment of Nashville Peer, we are committing to forming a long-term, equal partnership that will build practitioner capacity to engage with research and researcher capacity to engage with the practice. Now, at this time, first, I would like to acknowledge the very talented team that's here with us from Vanderbilt. If you're here representing Vanderbilt in this research-practice partnership, would you please stand for just a moment? And again, publicly, I just wanted, ahead of this announcement, just thank you all for your commitment, your partnership, your cooperation all along the way. It feels really good in the K-12 space to have such a strong partner in Vanderbilt University, so thank you all for being here. And at this time, I would like to invite the chancellor, our chancellor of Vanderbilt University, to talk more about the importance of this partnership between both institutions. Chancellor, please take the podium.
Good evening, and thank you, Dr. Battle. It's great to be here and discuss our work with Metro Nashville Public Schools. At Vanderbilt, we are dedicated to creating an environment where all of our students can thrive, regardless of their socioeconomic background and other conditions. We encourage our students to carve their own path, to embrace new and diverse ideas, and to immerse themselves in a holistic educational experience that will lead them to true personal growth. Like Metro Nashville Public Schools, we want our students to develop the tools and habits of mind to become lifelong learners. We're committed to working with you to achieve this objective and to improve educational equity and outcomes for all public school students here in Nashville. This, of course, is not a simple task. The roots of educational equities in our city are complex and multifaceted. Enduring challenges have only been compounded by COVID-19 and our city's recent growth. These are issues that defy easy answers, but together, we can start to address them through rigorous research and collaboration. Drawing on data and history, we can find new ways to improve access and belonging and to reduce disparities in educational outcomes, and we can create new pathways and opportunities for the students of today who are also Nashville's future citizens and leaders. Vanderbilt has seen success with other research-practice partnerships, such as the Tennessee Education Research Alliance, that some of you may be familiar with, TARA, a collaboration between Vanderbilt and the Tennessee Department of Education. TARA has made significant strides. For example, this spring, the Alliance studied inequities in how students experience school during COVID-19, spending six different Tennessee school districts. The study was designed to help education assistants recover from and compensate for the detrimental effects of the pandemic. Vanderbilt is dedicated to this critical research and is supporting our city on a broad scale. Just last week, Vanderbilt convened a community engagement forum with 20 local nonprofit leaders and city agencies. This is a seven-month program with local leaders and staff members coming together with academic experts to discuss best practices on a range of workplace issues. We also continue to offer opportunities to the Blair Academy, a program of our Blair School of Music that offers high-caliber music education to children and adults across the community, as well as to programs such as Next Steps, which is a four-year higher education experience for those with intellectual disabilities. All these efforts are part and evidence of our broad commitment to education. As we all know, our region is bursting with momentum, new possibilities, and new challenges. We all have a unique opportunity to partner, to shape our future, and to advance our growing city and the people within it. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Chancellor. It is great to see such a strong commitment from Vanderbilt to the success of Metro Nashville Public Schools. Strong partnerships with our colleges and universities are key to everything that we do, and it's definitely a key goal of mine and the district to help our students achieve their focus outcomes and go on to success after their career at MNPS. So if we could, just pause for just a moment, I would like to invite all those who've been a part of this long journey, hard work but great work, in developing and launching this partnership today, to join us up front for a quick photo and for us to just take another opportunity to thank you for your commitment and your hard work. So everyone from Vanderbilt and the MNPS team, please. Yes.
I just wanted to add a few words of support and really a high level of excitement as the university's provost. Thank you so much, Chancellor Dearmeier, for your remarks, and thank you, Dr. Battle, who has done so much in her 18 months as MNPS Director for more than 150 schools that you oversee. It's just wonderful to know about all of your accomplishments from your recent work helping to ensure a safe return to the classroom, to your pioneering vision with the Together for Teachers campaign, just truly impressive. We're also delighted that Katie Corr and the Nashville Public Education Foundation are helping to facilitate the work of the Steering Committee. And I think that one of the most exciting things about this partnership is the efforts that you've just described are co-designed. Clearly, this brings together not only Vanderbilt's expertise but the real-world insights of MNPS, as well as the collaborative ethos that I think we each share in such deep ways. The initial lines of research that have been defined will address the district's top priorities, as we've mentioned, and of course, your core tenet, Dr. Battle, of identifying and eliminating inequities. In terms of the ways in which we are really looking forward to working together, we're very excited that, under Dean Camilla Benbow's leadership, faculty from our top-ranked School of Education and Human Development, Peabody College, will work daily with MNPS, as they already do, on practice-oriented research, on learning, teaching, and leadership. This new research-practice partnership speaks personally to me, particularly given my past experiences as an academic researcher on one hand and a higher education leader on the other, partnering with Chicago Public Schools and with New York City Public Schools at the district level on research-practice partnerships in those cities. In that experience, I saw firsthand how this powerful form of partnership can really move forward debates, discussion, into implementation of real-world solutions to real-world challenges with a clear-eyed and level-headed understanding of the district's opportunities and constraints in order to support school leaders' vision in lasting and sustainable ways. So with this, I just want to highlight that this is truly a joint effort that offers exceptional promise for Nashville's learners and families, and as Vanderbilt's chief academic officer, I offer this partnership my wholehearted support. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chancellor. Madam Chair, I think we had a few board members who wanted to make a few comments before we transition. So I'm trying to break up to you.
Mrs. Poopa-Walker.
As the schoolward representative that represents district date where Vanderbilt is situated, I want to say personally, this is a very powerful partnership for me. My father taught at Vanderbilt, a merited professor. My husband teaches at Vanderbilt. I grew up on that campus. But I also want to say that as an educator, as someone who works in education policy, I've always wished that we had something akin to the Chicago Consortium on School Research, and I know Erin O'Hara very well. I have used O'Hara's research in my own work, in my own work for this board, and I think this is going to be a game changer for us to ask the hard questions and then look for the answers together. And so, really excited to work with your team, with your faculty, with your graduate students, and thank you so much for being here today, Chancellor, and just to the entire Vanderbilt community, thank you so much.
We echo all those sentiments. Anchor down. I mean, thank you. I think, really, I do appreciate that more and more the city of Nashville is wrapping its arms around Nashville students. I remember a Vanderbilt professor once saying that "I wish Nashville cared about all students. I wish Nashville was a place where all students were cared for," and we're beginning to see that, from the Public Education Foundation partnering, from Vanderbilt partnering, from educators pouring into their staff and, you know, really collaborating with their parents. We just had an advocacy committee meeting where our parent advisory council was here. I mean, it's great to see this. Let's just keep this momentum going. But yes, I don't want this to be lost on anyone in the viewing public, that we have both the chancellor and the provost of Vanderbilt here in our midst, ready to do research with our students, with our staff, and to make us a top-notch district. This is really exciting. I can't wait to hear more about it.
All right. So thanks again to the Vanderbilt team, to the MNPS team who's been working so closely, to MPF, who's also a representative and will be facilitating these conversations. I'm looking forward to all the work ahead. Thanks again. We can give them another round of applause. It's okay. Most appropriate. Now, I think this conversation is a perfect segue to our next conversation as a part of my Director's Report. In a moment, I would like to welcome up Dr. Paul Changis to give us an early look at our MAP data from assessments that were conducted at the beginning of the school year, right? Because we're talking about digging into the data, asking the tough questions, and aligning those tough questions with appropriate responses within our district. We've known for quite some time now, from previous MAP assessments, TCAP data, and experiences from districts around the country, that there will be academic challenges caused by the pandemic and gaps that need to be narrowed and closed in the years to come. And it will take years of efforts to make sure that we're able to recover and sustain that growth over time. This MAP data is the most complete data yet about where our students are right at this stage of the pandemic, and it gives us an important benchmark to show growth and progress throughout the school year and into the 2022 Promising Scholars Program. I'm also thankful for principals like Kelly Akers and Ashley Croft, who are here with us tonight. They are here to shed some light and highlight some of the ways in which schools use assessment data to focus on academic structures and interventions that will help their students grow over the course of the year. And I think it is evident in all of their work over the last year and years that if we are very strategic and aligned to every student known, digging into the data and making the appropriate adjustments, student outcomes will follow. So at this time, I would like to welcome up Dr. Paul Changis. He does not need an introduction. I will turn the podium and the mic over to him.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. As Dr. Battle said, I'll be giving a brief overview of our recent measures of academic progress, or MAP results, from the August administration. This was our first administration of the year, and we'll set our baseline as we go forward for the rest of the year. As I think everyone is well aware, our MAP data provides the, aligns with two of our key core tenets, creating, supporting, engaging, rigorous, and personalized learning experiences for all students, but also that data is critical to helping identify those inequities that exist within our data. It's also a key component for three of our focused outcomes. So the growth data from MAP is what fuels our literacy and numeracy outcomes. That data is also critical to identifying the needs of students and their preparation as they transition from tier to tier. And also highlighted our number of signature initiatives that these data play a key component in. So the assessment was administered in August, from August 10th to 27th, but as we mentioned at the last board meeting, we did allow two weeks of makeup for students who had been quarantined during this time. We tested more than 36,000 students in each of Language Arts and Mathematics. Over 92% of the students enrolled for each subject. As I said, these scores are critical at the student level. They help us identify those students that need additional support going forward. They follow our universal screening process in grades K through 6 and our screener in upper grades. As we've seen in the past, our English Language Arts scores continue to be somewhat higher relative to the scores nationally than our math scores. That was true prior to the pandemic and is even truer now, that the gaps grew a little wider in mathematics. Good news is that the test scores generally held steady from May to August. You know, we typically experienced some learning loss, and we actually saw a little bit of an increase in our English Language Arts scores when we looked at our overall student population in grades 2 through 9 and compared those scores to last May. Not only did the median national percentile go up for students, but the scale score, or RIT score, went up a little bit, which suggests that the achievement went up during this time. And the differences, in mathematics, we saw a little bit of a decline, but very small, and we held our own in terms of national ranking. And the good news is, too, that with mathematics, we saw that our Promising Scholars students made significantly better scores in terms of comparison to last year. Now, the scores are not large in terms of differential, but they were significant. They were not significant for English Language Arts. However, the good news is that our comparison group, the students who were not Promising Scholars students, also made increases in achievement, their national ranking. The scores were a little bit better in terms of the growth made by our Promising Scholars students, but years ago, when Doug and Lynn Fuchs, two premier researchers from Vanderbilt, were in our district, I remember them telling us, as we were seeing improvements in our growth data, that they were having trouble finding significant effects because all boats were rising, and that's good news. Now, digging into the actual data from this fall, on the left, we have our Language Arts scores, the number of students that tested at each grade level, 2 through 9, as well as the median national percentile. And again, the median national percentile tells us how our typical student did relative to students nationally. So across all grades, our median national percentile in Language Arts was 36, meaning that our middle student, our typical student, scored higher than 36% of students nationally. On the right, we see our mathematics scores, and again, as I mentioned, those scores tend to be a little bit lower at each grade than Language Arts relative to the nation. This is a breakdown of our data by national quintile. On the far left, the first quintile are the students that score in the lowest 20% nationally. On the far right, the students that score in the top 20% nationally. As you can see, the gold bars are Language Arts, the blue bars, Mathematics, and this, again, highlights that there is a differential with more students struggling, if you look at the far left, in Mathematics. And again, that has increased during the pandemic. The students that are in that bottom 20% are the ones that typically need those additional supports and are going to be addressed first through the MTSS process, the Multi-Tierred Systems Support. Now, in a short time, Principals Akers and Croft will speak to how they meet the needs of students, not only at the lowest tier, but across the span of these achievement With regard to our student subgroups, these are our Language Arts scores by subgroup, median national percentile. As we've seen in past presentations, there continue to be significant gaps between our student groups. Our English learners and students with disabilities score well below their classmates. You see the results for non-English learners, for students who are not students with disabilities. We also see that our Hispanic and Black or African-American students score well below our white and Asian students, and these are the inequities that we continue to try to Similar patterns in Mathematics, except, again, we'll see that for each subgroup, scores are a little bit lower, these national percentiles, than we saw in Language Arts, but the patterns mirror what we saw with the same subgroup scoring at the low end here. And again, these are consistent with what we saw with TCAP scores previously and what we saw in the spring with our MAP data, so we're continuing to see similar patterns. And I mentioned the differential that we saw with regard to Promising Scholars, and just as an FYI, we will have a more detailed report within the next couple of weeks. It also includes some qualitative data. also includes some qualitative data. So getting into supports and next steps, FAST bridge and MAP assessments are part of the universal screening process to identify students in need of additional supports. And these, these data are being used in schools now. You'll hear more about some of that shortly. The fall MAP scores are now available in the personalized student dashboard. And information on how to access and interpret these scores is being shared with families. We had a little delay, hiccup with our reading scores, but they are now in the dashboard in our campus system. With regard to getting that information out to families, our schools have been, we've got information on our website, step-by-step, guiding families through the process, videos as well of how to access and understand the data. Schools have been distributing flyers and letters and also doing callouts. And there's a big push to get to increase access. And we've developed a report that will hopefully help in that, in that process, in terms of getting the activation keys out to families. Assignments and grades are currently in SchoolAG. There was an update in our student information system with grading that has kept the grades and assignments out of the dashboard in recent weeks, but that is being completed this week. And next week, you should see that information in the dashboard. And those, those should be synced on a weekly basis going forward. Families have been providing feedback to us on the student dashboard that will help guide future development. We just had a town hall, and I received several good recommendations going forward. We'll continue to gather feedback. We've had surveys. We'll be doing focus groups. We'll develop some visuals around the feedback we've received and share that and get additional feedback to guide the process as we move forward with Phase 2 this, this spring. Now, I'm pleased to be followed by two outstanding school leaders. Dr. Battle mentioned Kelly Akers, executive principal at Rosebank Elementary. As I think everyone knows, their school exited priority status recently. Also, Ashley Croft, the executive principal at Inglewood. And they moved out of targeted support and improvement for the district. My part, reporting the data is the easy part. What we do with that data to improve instruction, to make the tough decisions, is what's critical. And that's what you're going to hear about from two of our schools in just a minute. All of our schools are using these data to make decisions about students on a regular basis. Principals Kelly, I'm sorry, Principals Akers and Croft are going to tell you about what they're doing at their particular buildings. And with that, and the effective strategies that they're using. With that, I'll turn it over to Principal Akers.
All right. Good afternoon, or evening, I'm not quite sure. Good evening, everyone. My name is Kelly Akers, and I am the principal of Rosebank Steam Magnet School in beautiful East Nashville. And I want to thank you all for having me this evening. So let me use this. There we go. So what I'm going to talk about is a little bit of how we use the screening tools that are available through the district to meet student needs and ensure that all students are known. So that's a little bit of my part. So here we go. So I want to start with this visual. And this is a visual that I know you have seen multiple times. But I really want to highlight this visual and talk about, this is a comprehensive model. Oftentimes, MTSS is looked at as an intervention model, but it is a comprehensive model. And our system, both at Rosebank and of course, at the district, is an integrated model. So we look at what do we do for students who are at that tier one or core level and ensure that they are receiving rigorous instruction at that level? And then what are the supports available for children who are in need of some support or more intensive support at those tiered approaches? We also look at that as an integrated model. So it is the academic side, but also the behavior and social-emotional learning side. So I want to move into the Rosebank model. So Rosebank is a model of demonstration school with this process, particularly around the RTIB side. And what we have specifically, I'm sorry, are, we look at the tiered instruction, both for an intervention model on both of those components, academics and SEL behavior. We have universal screening for both academics and behavior and social-emotional learning. We talk about database decision-making and using multiple sources of information. So we have our district screeners, and that is, of course, FAST and MAP that have been mentioned. We also have access to some root cause analysis tools, particularly for children who are at that tier three or in need of that most intensive support. We have that. And then once we have this data, we monitor and adjust and, you know, use that data to make decisions going forward. At Rosebank, we have a biweekly MTSS leadership team meeting. So that's a standing, every other week meeting. And we have developed a data monitoring protocol. And within this protocol, we look at the integrated pieces, but we look at every student who is in need. And we look at collaborative referrals, all of those different opportunities that are available. But we use this protocol, this tool, to make sure that we are monitoring students and, you know, that we're, that everyone, eyes are on everyone. Within our integrated meetings, beyond the leadership meeting, we have grade-level meetings about every five weeks. We also have a special populations meeting at the same time. So we look at our students with disabilities and our English learners within that special population. So they are, those educators are part of the grade-level teams, but they also look at their students outside of that to ensure that they are making rates of improvement that will close achievement gaps. A big focus for, at Rosebank is on fidelity, and that is at all tiers. And we have multiple tools that we use to really make sure that within each of those tier components, that fidelity occurs. And finally, that every student is known and we are, the work we're doing is aligned to student needs. So here are some buckets or tenants of our integrated model. And if you kind of go across the top, you're going to see that high-quality tier one or core instruction. This is rigorous, standards-based instruction. That is grade-level standards and beyond with the rigorous curriculums we have. Because you are not going to intervene your way out of a priority status, or you're not going to intervene your way there. You have to look at that high-quality core tier one instruction for everyone. And then the fidelity of that, to ensure that it's happening. We also, within that quality tier one, we look at our SEL, our social-emotional learning foundations, and have that model there. Then, if we move across, we talk about expanded screening. So of course, Dr. Changis mentioned MAP and FAST. We also administer twice a year what's called the Student Risk Screening Scale, or SRSS. And we have begun this year using a tool that is part of the Navigator program called Sown to Grow. And that is a weekly check-in that students self-evaluate how they are feeling in the world, you know, their emotions. And it's integrated within our Navigator program. We also use several root cause analysis tools. And these are for children who are performing at that tier three level or in the most intensive need. And these may include SiteWord, or decoding inventories, or other curriculum-based placement tools that are available. Next up, of course, our intervention groups are skill-based, and they are aligned to the needs that students have. And then we use evidence-based tiered interventions. And that includes for social-emotional learning and the behavior side and the academic side. Now, we have a suite of options that are available. And I know that Principal Croft is also going to talk about those. But just some of the examples that are supported by our district include, we have Lexia, we have iReady, we have Sound Sensible, we have Spire. We have a check-in-checkout model for social-emotional supports. We use Breaks Are Better, Positive Action, and TeachTown. Those are just, just some of the suite that we do have district supports with the implementation. When you move down to the next level, we can talk about weekly progress monitoring. Pivotal to any intervention model is looking at rates of improvement, because you have to begin to close those achievement gaps. So we look at the data and look at individual students' rates of improvement, and are they improving at a rate that will get them on par with their peers and move them out of a tiered intervention support. Rosebank has developed an integrated risk matrix. We know that attendance, behavior, and academics are sort of the big three flags for concern. And so we have developed a matrix that looks at data in those three categories. And what that allows is that our meetings are not, they're not musings or our feelings. They are database decisions, looking at the tools that we have. And then the last couple of slides are some of our resources. So of course, you know, for academics, we have a literacy coach, just as most schools do. We are an M7 Magnet School. So that has allowed us to have an additional coach who has worked with teachers on their core or tier one math instruction and STEAM integration, those projects, those units, and also some really fun technologies. So we have that. Now, in addition to that, I use site-based budgeting, the process we're in, where principals have, you know, some, are able to look at the needs of their school. And rather than have a psychologist on staff for halftime, I use additional funds to have someone there full-time to really help with some of these processes, particularly those tiered interventions along the way. And of course, we have counselor, our school counselor, and our district MTSS team. And then when you move on to the SEL and behavior side, we have counselors and social workers. Those are available to all schools. We have added an advocacy coach this year. That's part of the new model. So that's been exciting. And then, of course, the psychologist. And then we reference the expertise of the district behavior team as well. All right. So I think that is a little bit about Rosebank and our MTSS model. And at this time, I get to introduce the fantastic Ashley Croft, executive principal of Inglewood, and my neighbor in East Nashville, both in school and life. We both live there. So I get to introduce her. And she's going to really talk to us about what, now that we have the data and the plan, what does it look like for students? Thank you.
All right. So thanks so much, Principal Akers. And thank you all for having us today to share about some of the work that's happening in schools every day. And specifically, I'll talk about what's happening at Inglewood. So Principal Akers shared about the universal screening process, delivering those assessments, and then having our meetings to determine the needs of students and how we could best meet those. And now, what do we do with that? We've had the meetings, now what? Personalized learning time is the big focus, because that's really where kids get the supports that they need. So I'm going to talk about two big things. One, I'm going to talk about how we have leveraged our resources as a school to support a really strong personalized learning time. Then I'm also going to show you a day in the life of a student and what personalized learning time looks like for them. So first, one of our big charges as principals is to leverage our resources to best support our kids. And when we're thinking about resources, we're talking about time, people, and money. So when we got our budget last year, we knew that we have different funding streams. We have our student-based budget. We had some ESER funding that came to the schools last year. We have Title I funding as a Title I school. And also, just like Rosebank, we are also a recipient of the Magnet School's Assistance Program. So we have some funding for that as well. So with my team, we had to look at how to best use these resources to meet the needs of our students. One of the things that we know we needed, we knew we needed, was additional staffing for interventions. We needed to really support our people to be able to deliver these interventions that we know our students need. We added two full-time interventionists. So these are not retirees. They're with us all day, every day. We have one for math and one for literacy. We also really beefed up the training for all of our classroom teachers, so that every single teacher is trained on our suite of interventions that we offer. That allowed us to not be limited by who we have available to deliver an intervention. If we have a group of kids, if we have three groups of kids who all need the same interventions, we have the teachers and the staff ready to go to meet those student needs as soon as they're determined. So beefing up that intervention staffing was a big focus for us. Then, we really looked at our time and our money and our people to figure out how to offer extended learning for our kids. We partnered with Turnip Green Creative Reuse and MMPS Extended Learning Programs. And we're able to offer aftercare enrichment at no cost to our families for 50% of our student body. So that is huge. It's a game changer for our families who need aftercare. It's also a game changer for our students, because we were able to take our two interventionists that I mentioned earlier, they work 9:30 to 5:00. So they see groups, they have planning, and then they see groups all day. They also see additional groups during that aftercare program. So kids are getting academic enrichment or intervention during that time. They're also getting arts enrichment with Turnip Green and any additional, they're getting outdoor play and all the things that typically happen during an aftercare program. So we're really excited about that. One of the final things that we did was we added a related arts class. As an environmental sciences school, that's something that our kids love, and we wanted to see more of. So we added a class called Environmental Connections. It gives our kids additional exposure to science content. It also helps to develop their 21st century skills around problem-solving, communication, collaboration. So it's a great opportunity for kids. It's also a great opportunity for teachers, because it has allowed us to provide them with a duty-free recess. So in total, our teachers have 90 minutes of planning. So there are 60 minutes of teacher planning daily, and then a duty-free recess, so 90 minutes. We back those up. We did some scheduling things to make it work. So teachers have time to plan really purposeful interventions for their students, as well as time to plan strong, core, tier-one instruction with our new curriculum that we're implementing this year. So that's a little bit about how we've used our resources, particularly around staffing and budgeting. But let's talk about the impact on kids. So if you are a second grader at Inglewood, here's what your day might look like. So you all have been introduced to these students before. It may have just looked a little bit different. So our student on the left scored in the 50th percentile on their screeners. So they're right, kind of in the middle. They need tier one reinforcement and enrichment. Our student there in the middle scored in the 25th percentile. So they need a little bit more intervention, or they do, they need an intervention, skills-focused, tier-two intervention. Then our student all the way on the right, in the yellow, scored in the fifth percentile on the screeners. And they need that skills-focused, more intensive, tier-three intervention. This is the most intensive intervention that we offer in the general education setting. During the school day, all three of these students are going to receive that tier one core grade-level instruction in both literacy and math. So they get that, every kid gets that every day. Then, you see here that they each have their personalized learning time that is truly personalized for their needs. So our student in tier one is going to get reinforcement or remediation of skills or standards. They're going to be using, at Inglewood, we use Lexia and iReady, a district-provided resource that we love. Kids love it as well. So they're using that during their personalized learning time. They're also meeting with the teacher one day per week to get additional instruction for them. So it's not just sit on the computer for 45 minutes. You're doing some computer work individualized for your needs, and you're also meeting with the teacher once a week. Our student in the blue, in the middle, needing that tier-two intervention. They're going to meet with a teacher for three days per week for 30 minutes each. That's, that's our model for a tier-two intervention. So they're meeting with a teacher a little bit more, and they're working on Lexia and iReady. Those two blended learning programs have teacher-directed lessons that are really targeted to a student's needs. So that child is going to meet with the teachers a little bit more often. And then, the student all the way on the right needs that skills-focused, tier-three intervention. They are meeting with our interventionist for 45 minutes, five times a week, during their personalized learning time, to get that really intensive intervention. For literacy, at Inglewood, we use Spire. And then for math, we use Moving with Math. Then, so that's what every kid gets, personalized learning time. And then, after school, we're able to offer some additional opportunities for the kids who need it. So our tier-one students continue to get that reinforcement and remediation. And then, we're able to offer a skills-focused, tier-two intervention and a second dose. And then, we're able to offer a skills-focused Tier 2 intervention and a second dose for students who might need it. So for example, let's say that the student in the middle, our team during our data meetings that Principal Akers described, our team decided that this student really needed a little bit of support in both math and reading. So we decided that during the day, they were going to get their Tier 2 math instruction or their Tier 2 math intervention. And then in their after-school group, they're going to get their Tier 2 reading intervention with our interventionist. Say the student in the yellow, they just, they need reading. That is what they need. So they're going to get that during the school day and then they're going to get additional reading after school if that's what our team decided they needed. Could also be true for the other subjects. So personalized learning time is truly personalized. I think, you know, we throw around the acronym we use as PLT. The kids all know we're going to PLT. But I think the personalized part is really important to take note of. And I'm really proud of the growth that our kids are making and the work that our teachers have put into it. So thank you all for letting me share about some of the work that we're doing at Inglewood. And I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Bellamy to talk a little bit more with you. Thank you.
Yeah, I was going to ask for another round of applause for those ladies, but you guys beat me to it. But one more won't hurt. So one more round of applause for the team. Thank you. I don't know if I'm missing the clicker. Oh, there it is. So I just wanted to join the board quickly this evening to answer the question we always end with, with how can the board continue to support? So one, you can continue to advocate for strong school-to-home connections, which I've seen you doing in the PAC meeting this afternoon, through signing up for the personalized student dashboard. We've talked about, you know, an educated parent as to where their student stands is the best kind of partner for the school. You can see the hard work these ladies and their teams, the amazing schools they're leading, are putting into place for our students. And so parents leaning in, partnering with us, understanding what interventions their kids may need, when it's delivered, how it's delivered, and what other opportunities exist is paramount to our success. So you can continue to help us advocate for that. And you can continue to support the school-based budgeting process. Much of what you heard tonight is because of their ability, their autonomy, and their flexibility to take their funds, to have discussions with the experts on the ground in their school about what their kids need, and then to creatively put those resources into place. The school-based budgeting model is incredibly powerful when used that way. And I think you can see two schools right here tonight that are having success by doing that. So your continued support and advocacy around how we funnel those funds, those ESER funds, the Title funds, everything you've heard about in your presentations through the school-based budgeting process. And so again, I'm just proud to stand here before you tonight to talk about Dr. Changis and his team's work and then the work of our two great schools tonight, Rosebank and Inglewood. And two people that didn't get shouted out just yet, Dr. Renita Perry and Dr. David Kovac, the executive directors of those schools. So give them a round of applause. Dr. Battle, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Bellamy. And just to make sure everybody was clear, we throw around the term EDs a lot, our executive directors. Both executive directors who support those two schools are here with them tonight. And this is just how connected our principal coaches are to their schools and their work. So if you could, please stand because I can't see Edie Perry. I see Edie Kovac. If y'all can just stand and be acknowledged. Thank you. Thank you for your great work. Thank you, principals, for sharing with us the magic that happens daily on your campuses. And kudos to your teams, your entire teams, your teachers, your support staff, everyone who plays a part in supporting your students on a daily basis. And with that, Madam Chair, I'll turn it back over to you.
Sure. That was a lot of great information. Board, questions or thoughts to share? Go ahead, Mrs. Tyler.
Yes, this is in relation to the student dashboard. I know at our PAC meeting that you said that you've been sending out emails and callouts and flyers home so that the families know about it. I just wanted to check and make sure that they were being done in different languages also, so that all of our students are able to understand what they need to do.
And I see several heads nodding back there. Dr. Changis or Mr. Braystead, if one of you wants to acknowledge their communication process?
Yes, they were translated into this.
Thank you for making the long walk. And then, my other question is, I know that activation key kind of is a piece that's a little harder because there's so many letters and it can be overwhelming. Is it, would it be possible for families who, even with those flyers and callouts, still can't figure it out, could they go to that, like their local support hub? Like, you know, I know at Inglewood, we have one that's available and we have tech representatives there to help with computer issues. Would that be something that they could go to that hub to get help with there in person?
Absolutely. That's a yes as well. And also, just want to point out, we do have parent-teacher conferences coming up in a few weeks. Our schools are already planning ahead around having the right data conversations, data chats with our families and our students, but also for families who need that additional support or who have not signed up, using that as an opportunity to make sure that they're aware and signed up in the system.
Great. Thank you so much. And then I had a real quick question about the different tiers. We used to have enrichment as a tier, but I didn't see that as a choice. Do we still offer enrichment as one of the tiers?
Go ahead, Dr. Bellamy. I just love how everybody's ready. They know, everybody knows who's well housed. Go ahead, Dr. Bellamy.
Sure. Enrichment should be involved in, for, when you talk about the Tier 1 students. So there are Tier 1 students that are above the 50th percentile, right, in the 85th, 90, 95th percentile. Those students would be receiving enrichment during the same time the student in the 50th percentile might be getting standard remediation. We just didn't break it out that way in that particular presentation, but enrichment would absolutely be delivered during PLT time.
And does enrichment include all students who test there, not just encore students or GATE students? It includes anybody who tests into it? Is that correct?
Enrichment in terms of PLT could refer to, I mean, it could be to a variety of students, having nothing to do with whether or not encore or young scholars is factored into the question, although those certainly are enrichment activities, right?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that the access was there for everybody who needs it. And then I did have a question. So I know that the way students get in their tiers is very heavily based on their MAP scores. So what procedures do we have in place for their students who really don't test well and need extra supports? Like, they might be ADHD or dyslexic and they struggle on the test, but mentally they are more than capable of being in a Tier 1 instead of a Tier 3 or a Tier 2. So what other ways do we place students in their intervention tier if that's something that happens?
That's a fantastic question. And that's a lot, Principal Akers delivered a lot of very heavy information, the one slide with all the multiple boxes. You could really do an hours-long presentation just on that data team process, right? MAP is just an initial point. FAST is just an initial point. So when she talks about the power of having her school psychologist and that whole core team, they are talking about all the other data points that MAP doesn't capture. So I might be flagged by my MAP test because I had a poor day. My teacher may come to that same meeting and say, he does not need to be in that, he needs to be here. And we give a great deal of weight to the practitioner who's with the child every day, as well as you saw other screeners, she talks about triggering there, right? So again, it's just an initial point. Additionally, they're meeting every four and a half to five weeks to talk about, did we make the right initial decision? So even if it gets through that first screening process and you assign a tier, but their rate of improvement's showing that they don't need it, then you change that decision, right? So that's the power of that model, which is why we wanted to bring these two ladies up, because they're really clearly getting the results and doing it better than most. And so their school has some great, great methods and staff to make sure that they're identifying the right needs, but are responsive if we somehow misidentify that need, right?
And you were saying that students can move up or down. How fluid is that? Is that something that could happen? Does it have to wait until they meet again in four weeks? Or could it happen sooner?
Generally speaking, you're going to wait. If you've placed those tiers and you've had those thorough conversations, you're going to wait to that four and a half to five-week interval. In particular, there's some repercussions for, if you have a child who might be progressing ultimately to an evaluation for a special ed evaluation, the law's pretty clear on what you have to rule out and make sure that you've done those things at certain intervals. So generally speaking, those intervals are based in the RTI manual from the state for those reasons. You could make a decision, in particular about a child that's having a great deal of success, to say, did we possibly misplace this child? But generally speaking, you're going to wait to those intervals where your data team can come and all the practitioners can talk about the data to make sure you're making the safe, the best decision before you prematurely move someone that may still need a support.
Okay. That's good to know. And then also, I know that the interventions for specific students can look a little different. For example, we have students with dyslexia and we have a dyslexia coordinator for the first time this year, which I'm very excited about. How do we make sure that those particular students are not doing just the Tier 3 things, they're doing the Tier 3 things in the manner that they need because of their dyslexia? Does that make sense?
I believe I'm understanding your question. Let me see if I can rephrase it.
Sometimes the way stuff is presented to certain groups of students who have special needs, they need to make sure that that presentation is done in a way that they can understand it and absorb it.
Absolutely. So there's a variety of functions that would serve that. One, Lexia, the tool we primarily reckon or utilize for that is adaptive. And so especially the beginning of the year, when students are taking placement tests, it's very important that we describe what that placement test is for and what it does. A student may feel like they're not being challenged adequately because the placement test starts at a low level. It's designed to as an adaptive placement test, right? So I think it's very important that we communicate the purpose of those things and why they're used that way. We've seen a great deal of success with it. And our new dyslexia coordinator in particular has a great deal of experience with the program. So I do feel like we have lots of measures in place to make sure that is happening. Ultimately, of course, there's also plenty of different processes that a parent could avail themselves of. In particular, if your child already has an IEP, you should always feel comfortable calling an IEP meeting and talking through those things. If you've seen a particular service or software or intervention that you don't feel like is meeting those needs, I would encourage you as a parent to call that meeting. You're welcome to say, I'm going to waive my 10-day notice so that we can meet sooner and let's have a discussion as an IEP team. It's why the law is written that way. And all of our schools will be accepting of that and willing to come to the table and talk through that if we've identified an intervention that may or may not be providing the service. And ultimately, that's why it's important that we measure those rates of improvement to determine those things as well.
Okay, great. And then, last question. During Rosebank's day, you were talking, Ms. Aker, about focusing on fidelity at all tiers and how important that is. And I was wondering if that is something specific to your schools because of the status of you guys are, you know, an integrated school with the getting, you said you were getting extra funds for that. So is that something that is specific to your status as the demonstration school? Or do all schools have the same way to check and make sure that there's fidelity at all levels?
So I will answer to the question to all schools. So all schools certainly have a suite of options to do that. And fidelity to the Tier 1 curriculum and fidelity to the interventions is an extremely important part of progressing children through those needs. So again, ultimately, if we're saying this child has a need and are they responding to the intervention, which the RTI framework stands for response to intervention, right? We call it MTSS, we integrate it, but RTI is where a lot of that lives at the state. And so you want to make sure that if a child's not responding to the intervention, you have to uncover why. And so fidelity checks are the way that you make sure it's not because of a lack of fidelity to the programs. They're also a way you make sure that the initial need is not because of a lack of Tier 1 instruction. So we need to make sure that there's fidelity in all those. So Rosebank, no doubt, has a great model to achieve the things they have. They're definitely a place that I think lots of, lots of schools, lots of principals could learn from. Make no mistake, we have lots of schools doing this very well as well. So I think we have lots of schools that would utilize similar structures in place. But what it comes down to is what they'll refer to as a fidelity check. So you want to check in Tier 2, if we're saying this child needs this 30-minute skill-based intervention, then you're going to check occasionally to make sure, A, we're delivering the right intervention, B, we're delivering in the right ways for the right amount of time. So some of that fidelity check is also checking a child's attendance. If they miss enough school to where you get to that data chat and you can't say that there was fidelity to it, not through any fault of our own, but because the child was ill and wasn't there. So there's a lot of different things that fall into the fidelity check process that's in the RTI manual. But at the district level, the expectations, you're checking fidelity to all those programs through your walkthroughs as a principal, through your collaborative planning structures.
Thank you.
All right, Mrs. Elrod.
Thank you. I guess to piggyback, we'll go in a different order than I have it written, so I apologize. To piggyback, I think, on Board Member Tyler's question specifically about dyslexia and just other students with disabilities that need special things like auditory assistance and those kinds of things, whether that's through their PLT or other individual instruction. How do we communicate the adaptive needs of some of these PLT assessments? It's my understanding that at times, I know that they are adaptive. We've had many discussions about that on the board. But if a student doesn't know that or if a family does not know that, it can be particularly frustrating as it can feel like you are being taught something that is maybe inappropriate for you or it could potentially harm your self-confidence. And so how do students know that there's an adaptive process to this and how are parents informed of that as well?
Go ahead, Dr. Bellamy.
I think it's important to distinguish between adaptive software, which is, some of your questions alluding to, right, that it starts at a low, it can start at a very low level to determine, gets more difficult as the student progresses if they're getting correct answers. It can also adjust and get easier if they're getting answers wrong. So how we would want to communicate that to the students and to the parents ultimately is from the class level, from the school level. We want to just educate parents around the fact that your child will be taking MAP. This is what it is, this is what it's for, which Dr. Changis's office is very good at communicating those kind of things and providing our schools with the resources to do that. Admittedly, we can always do a better job at communicating the need for those assessments, what we do with those assessments, and how those assessments work. The other part of your question really goes more to accommodations. And if you have a parent that, whether it's auditory or whatever your accommodation needs, obviously, that should be handled in your IEP if you have one or your 504, in which case, a universal screener, not, not every accommodation can be used on every test depending on the nature of that test. And so that should be a discussion, in particular for children, with IEPs, 504s, with the parent to let them know if we can't utilize the accommodation, why, what's that rare instance and reason why we can't? And inform you of that. It should also be written in the IEP that on this particular test, we can't use that accommodation. If we can use that accommodation, then we should be, just like we do with every other assessment we give. We've agreed to an accommodation that we say the IEP team says a child needs, then it's certainly our responsibility to deliver it.
I guess my follow-up to that is if, is it up to a parent to remember when that accommodation will or will not be available to them based upon the test type? Or are they reminded of this is not available in this particular assessment style?
I think best practice would always be if, A, the accommodation should always be utilized if we've agreed to it. It should be written right there in the IEP that on these types of assessments, we will always use it. And if we don't, that needs to be remedied and addressed. If there's some reason we can't use it, best practice would be that you reach out ahead of time and you tell the parent, just a reminder, this is a test, we can't use that accommodation on. You know, can I affirm that that always happens? I'm sure that we miss the mark occasionally, but that would be the best practice. And I think our, in particular, our E educators are pretty good at doing that and communicating with their parents and making sure. And again, those circumstances should be few and far between when a child's accommodation can't be used on a test.
And I think also, just pointing out, I know we're focusing a lot on assessments, but what should be happening on a, maybe on a daily, frequent basis is that that's being practiced through some of our informal formative assessments as well. So it should be, it shouldn't just happen on MAP test days. It should be part of the practice throughout the entire school year.
In fact, to utilize accommodations on T and Ready, you have to demonstrate that you've been using them for preponderance of the year, right? So you can't just have an IEP meeting the week before T and Ready and put in accommodations for everybody if you haven't shown a need to be using those throughout the year.
Correct, correct. No, I absolutely did not just mean when it's a considered high-stakes testing, but it's also whether it's Lexia Core or whatever other options we have for PLT. We, of course, live in a world of a lot of acronyms. And I like to believe that we all know what those acronyms mean, but I know that there are many families and parents that do not. I mean, I will speak for myself. If I was not on the board, I cannot say that I would be completely aware of what an MTSS meant and those kinds of things. And because those things change so much based upon school-based budgeting and other available resources to each individual school and the autonomy that they have, how do families know what these things are and how they are available to them? I understand that it is important that they understand and know the data that's available to them in the dashboard, and it is a wonderful and the right starting place. But I believe our families should also know how that impacts their classrooms and, of and, of course, their individual students with our want of every student known. So how do they know what this, how do they know what this means? And how do they know what this looks like to their individual student at their school?
Now, I'll take an initial stab at this one. So now that we have a device in the hands of all our students and we've got more technology at our disposal, one of the things that we've taken on at the district level is more time connecting and communicating with our families about MAP assessments around our MTSS and PLT process. So we're trying to leverage as many of the resources and avenues that we have to continue to communicate that and reiterate what's coming up next or what to do in response to the data. I also have to give kudos to our school teams because they are constantly, at the school level, connecting with their families. They know their families best when it comes to callouts, when it comes to family meetings, when it comes to a Teams call, whatever takes an individual teacher conversation. They're pulling out all the stops to make sure that they're communicating with their families and keeping everyone up to speed about what's happening. I think part of the reason that we wanted to go here today and the director's report and looking at MAP is really starting to dig really deep into what this looks like on a day-to-day basis. It's a lot to take in. Our teams do a lot of training and collaborating around how it plays out on a daily basis. But part of it is continuing to keep this a part of the conversation and recognizing the extreme efforts that our teams are putting in place to communicate and to be responsive to the data. So we're trying to respond, in response to your question, we're trying to respond at a district level, things that are just, you know, general kind of common sense practices, making ourselves available with our district team, our support team, responding to families. But at the school level, they're doing everything that you can think of as far as social media, again, leveraging Teams, parent callouts, emails, to keep everyone abreast of what this all means in the day of their student or students in MNPS.
Have we stand, I'm sorry. Have we standardized any of those processes between all of our schools? An example would be the new MAP data is available. We now know it's also available for reading. I so appreciate that being updated. So we know that it's available. So now parents can be notified in a systematic approach, though I understand it's going to be different for each individual school based upon the resources they have available to them. Of like, here's the next step of what you would do as a principal, whether it's a call out or you're going to refer to this particularly in a parent-teacher conference. Is there something that we have automated and it is part of our system and processes?
I'm going to kind of leverage and go back to my previous response. So there's two ways to think about this. At the district level, when you're talking about commonality, everything, things that we want every parent to have, it looks the same, feels the same, it can be applied, in every situation you can think of, we're typically going to communicate that at a district level. It's the same information for every student. Then at the school level, and I'm glad I acknowledged our executive directors who are here, and they're sitting with their principal leaders, we have our networks of schools. So what our networks do, they come together and they talk about best practices. So MAP assessment is going to be administered from this date to this date. Let's talk about the best practices. Let's agree upon how we're going to communicate this. As a matter of fact, let's come together, in some ways. I've seen this particular network do lots of things in that manner together so that can make sure that all their parents, parents in their community have the same information. But we typically address those, again, district level to the school level. But we also have that network of support for the commonality and strategies that you will see across the board. Every community is different, however. So a community that responds better to a call out might, in one area, might be different from a community where it's better to get them on a Team Call. So we allow for that variation because we're also charging our schools to meet the needs of the families that they serve. But there are common practices, strategies, standardization around when and how we communicate that. In years past, we've sent out the hard copy reports for MAP. We've done that universally across every school and then supported our school teams with resources and tools about how to communicate that and support parents. That's what you're seeing in a similar fashion with our personalized student dashboard. Every family gets the information, everyone gets the supporting tools that Dr. Changis and his team have provided. School teams are coming together, talking about best strategies and resources and how we're going to communicate. But they also might do some things that are customized to their learning community to make sure that, you know, interpretation, translation is provided if that is representative in their student population.
Sure. I understand that each area and even different populations within an individual school have different ways that they prefer to be communicated with and frankly, have the better access to communication. My hope is that we have something that is more clear among all schools of how that's to be used. Maybe that's in our parent-teacher conferences, and here's what the expectation is of how these are presented. And so it is more streamlined and just what the expectation is. But with some flexibility too, there's obviously going to be different ways that you have to reach out to different parent groups and provide that information. But I think it's important that our families not only know what the data is, but they know how that impacts their student and what potential resources are available to them once they can understand all the acronyms that we understand and try to understand. And then, lastly, though this is quite the reverse, and I apologize, for the Vanderbilt partnership, it's my understanding that that partnership is with Peabody, which is, of course, excellent. Is there also going to be a partnership with the Kennedy School as well? And maybe the Triad Group or any other associations that deal with the focus of students and people with disabilities?
Oh, you, okay. In this, in this research-practice partnership?
Yes.
Dr. Changis or Dr. Randolph, if you all want to respond, I don't believe there's been specific conversations around that as opposed to drilling down in our equity conversation, our focus, but I'll give Dr. Changis an opportunity to respond.
We have not gotten into those, that level of specificity at this time. I'll just say that this is my 24th year in the district, and we've been talking about this kind of partnership most of that time. And just to be where we are right now, we're still in the early stages of talking about our priorities and what practices we're going to address. But, you know, we hope to continue to build on the partnership.
Agreed. I mean, I'm happy, I'm happy to have the partnership. I'm eager to, of course, maximize the partnership. So that is why my question exists, is to make sure that we use, we utilize all of the resources that they have available to us, and I feel like they will and that we're confident in that. Just wanted to make sure, ask the question while we had the time. Thank you so much.
Young people, please feel, student board members, please know that you all can answer, ask questions if you have them. But anyone? We'll go Mrs. Player Peters and then Mrs. Masters.
I was making sure the other board members didn't have any. Oh, I have a, I think this might go to, well, Dr. Battle, you have it. So I have this technical question about, we have 36,000 kids, you know, upwards of 80,000. So grades K through 1 and then 10 through 12 is the remainder that's not...
Included.
Included in the 36,000. Is that the explanation at?
Pre-K.
Oh, pre-K. So why have we tested 30,000 kids when we have 80,000 kids in our enrollment system? So just explain the difference. And since the assumption is everyone gets tested under MAP testing, why is only 36,000 kids?
So to address the majority of what's not here, of course, this is representative of grades 2 through 9. And so you would not have tested for this purpose, pre-K, K and 1. And then also grades 10 through 12 are not assessed via the MAP assessment. So what you have here is represented in grades 2 through 9. Anybody else I'm missing? Yeah.
And I guess, why wouldn't we do that? Why wouldn't we do from K through, first through 12?
Can I, I mean, in pre-K kindergarten...
Sorry, I don't have any kids, so this is the new...
In pre-K kindergarten and first grade, the MAP test is not developmentally appropriate for them. So that's why they don't receive it, and they shouldn't be.
Okay, thank you.
And I believe for 10 through 12, it's not currently structured for the, remember, once you get into 10 through 12th grade, you have specialized courses that students take and not just a standard course that students will be enrolled in.
Okay.
Well, we'll tell you, my pre-K student knows how that G makes the "G" sound, and that was about all the MAP testing we needed. I said, okay, baby, you know, you know what these, you let it sound like, good job.
And just to be clear, we do have some students in other grades that are tested. We only report out on the mandated grades. There are some additional students tested. But I also want to clarify that we're talking about non-charter students because charters are doing their own assessments and some are doing MAP, but they're not doing it on our schedule. And so we're only reporting on the district-run schools in 2 through 9.
Okay, thank you. And I have one more question, sorry. Oh, for, I guess for assessment surfaces, are we using students who did not go through the Promising Scholars Program as more of a control group to test the success or the effectiveness of the Promising Scholars? Or is that just, this is a comparison that you just did, just for, just to see the success between the two?
The data that I referred to and that we'll be reporting on are a group of students. There are over 5,000 students that we're looking at that we have matched scores who were in Promising Scholars. We have an additional, a little over 5,000 students that we are comparing them to who had prior test scores in May that were comparable to the group and also comparable in terms of economic disadvantage, English language learner status, and students with disabilities. So in other words, we are talking about a matched sample that was very comparable.
So are we going to continue this throughout the years to show, I guess, the value of having the high-dosis tutoring over a time, particularly given where we are, you know, kind of environmentally in society?
We haven't discussed how long we want to follow up. The initial concern was about the, you know, what happened over the summer. They're looking at long-term effects. And I'll say, the differences are not large. They are significant, but they're not large. Our main concern was, again, addressing the summer learning loss. But with most interventions, you do want to do some follow-up over time, and we can certainly do that.
Okay. And then my last question is, the math scores, have they, is this a trend for math scores to be traditionally lower than the reading scores? Or is this something that's more of a recent development?
I'm sorry, did you say?
Is it, so the trend for the math scores?
Mercy scores.
Math scores being lower than the reading scores or performing? I don't know if that's the right word.
The math, the math scores, yeah, are low, I'm sorry, I thought you said math. The math scores are lower than the reading scores. And that is, that's been consistent since 2016 with our first administration of MAP. And that has continued. There have been very few cases where a grade level has done better in mathematics over that period of time. And as I said, the gap got a little bit wider since the pandemic.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Masters? Just in thinking about what Rach Lan said about acronyms. So the, could you just remind us what the difference is in the FAST testing and the MAP testing? And then also how that is sort of communicated to parents? I hear it so many times, I didn't even know my kid was going to be having that test today or whatever. You know, I would have gotten up and made eggs or something. But, so anyway, yeah, just what is the difference between a FAST, F-A-S-T acronym, and the MAP test acronym? And then how do parents know, like, which test they're getting and when?
Dr. Battle?
Dr. Changis, do you want to take a stab at that? As he's coming up, communication is, most of that communication is going to happen between the teacher, the school team, to the parent. Because schedules differ, so we announce the window. But how that actually plays out in a school setting based upon size and needs of the school may look different. So those communications typically come directly from the teacher and/or the school team or principal. Dr. Changis?
And the primary difference in the assessments is that the FAST assessments are testing, are skills-based, testing specific skills that are, and they're generally very short assessments to look at skill gaps that students have. And they're recommended for, as a universal screener. Whereas MAP is looking at standards-based measurement. And we can, and they're going to be longer tests. We can provide the board with some, I think, some examples of the types of sample questions that might differentiate the two. But they both provide nationally-normed data, but the assessment methods are different.
Great. And then I'm also thinking about, and we've been talking a lot about the high-dose tutoring and then also how we're going to measure the impact of those programs and then looking at all the wonderful things that are happening at Inglewood and Rosebank and how much one-on-one time the students are getting with teachers. You know, my mind is going to, where does the high-dose tutoring fit in with that? And, and then again, back to that question of how are we sort of delineating between the programs and interventions that are already in place? And then how much of an effect the high-dose tutoring is having? Because I just want to be sure we're measuring the impact appropriately.
Thank you for the question. Dr. Randolph is going to respond, but I think this also speaks to the craft and skill of our teams. And we're asking them for a lot. We're asking them to take lots of data points, knowing every student, responding frequently to make sure we're meeting the needs of our students. So I think to your question, I think it just highlights the extreme need for good planning, great leadership, and quality teaching happening every day. But Dr. Randolph will speak, will respond specifically to the high-dose tutoring and where that plays into this plan.
Sure. Thanks for the question. So I will point back to our amazing principals' presentation. You know, when we, most of the tutoring is happening during PLT or during structured before or after school. And it's targeting students who don't qualify for tier-two interventions, if you think back to their presentation, up to the 60th percentile. So we've really targeted, you know, making sure we're meeting those tier-three, tier-two expectations across the board, but pushing in for students who also could use some help. So, and I'll remind us all that we're using staff where they have availability and their parameters around that. But we also have volunteer tutors that we've trained. So these are additional folks. As far as the evaluation of that rigorous, we have an evaluation partner for that, Edinburgh Institute and Brown. And we are having lots of conversations about the metrics for that. They're academic, they're also SEL, so it's across the boards. We're looking at academic growth as well as things like sense of belonging, self-efficacy, and those types of measures, and being very intentional about those. Both for, and I've stressed this with our evaluators, we don't want to report at the end to go back and say, well, I wish we'd done that. We're getting very frequent updates on data, so we can do continuous improvement along the way.
I think that was very enlightening. Thank you. I think this is the first time it clicked in my head that the high-dose tutoring is for students that don't, that aren't in tier-two or tier-one. I don't know why I didn't realize that before.
Well, I'm going quick caveat, that's true if they're getting it during PLT, during the school day.
Got it, okay.
If it's outside of school hours, we're targeting the kids who need it most in schools. Schools are dictating that, right? They're telling us, these are the students, we aren't...
Okay, that was very helpful. Thank you. And then I just, one more question. So when I see what's happening in these schools and they're clearly getting results for their students, I just wonder about, I'm sure there is a process for sharing, but sort of, you know, what sort of platforms and gatherings do we have for amazing principals like this to share their best practices and methodologies with other principals? Even understanding that every school has different populations of students that they're assisting. But I'm just thinking, you know, how are they letting others know? You know, do other schools have the opportunity to say, I want to do what Rosebank did, show me how?
That's, that's the million dollar question, and we spend a lot of time addressing that. So again, I'll point out ED Kovac and Perry behind us. They each, every month, lead a PLN network meeting where they take every one of the principals in their network, and they focus on problems of practice, just like what you're talking about. As we went through the budget season last spring, we worked through the ESTRA funding in particular, and the executive directors led their networks in sessions where they share ideas and strategies. Matter of fact, when we were preparing for this exact presentation, I asked David if we had any other schools that were working through the additional planning time. You know, I was very impressed by the innovative structure there. Lots of the things about, honestly, I'm sure many of our schools would love to get a full-time psychologist. We're having trouble finding those people right now, right? So that's a great strategy, that not always that easily replicable or replicated. But we have monthly PLN meetings, the morning block, which is always centered around instructional guidance and leadership, where these kind of topics are exactly meant to create opportunities for the colleagues to share. They update their action plans every four and a half weeks. Second quarter will be due coming out of fall break, where they'll capture many of these ideas, and the executive directors have access to all of those. So they're kind of the conduit to look at all of those different ideas and sharings and in their visits, connect people to other strategies that are working and connect people, you know, also say, I'd like to connect other people to you if they find a strategy that's working. So we're pretty proud of the work they're doing to connect all that and the time they spend in schools doing just that. So thank you for the question and the opportunity to highlight that.
And I think the short of that is that we've... And I think the short of that is that we've, we've restructured our principal leadership network meetings for highlighting best practices across our schools, for our principals to share. And again, I think this is an opportunity to highlight the leadership we have in our schools, because it is just a natural part of what they do. I was in a school yesterday, and one of our middle school principals was sharing with me a practice he took on from another leader from across town, not even in his network, but because they have such a close-knit group of leaders, they are constantly sharing inside of our structures and outside. So that's what it's all about. We, that's what we do as educators still, and borrow wherever we can, knowing that is for the good of all of our students. So we're taking those strategies and those practices, and we're highlighting them again at the district level, but our principals are definitely leading the work.
So how many, for each executive director, how many schools are they overseeing?
It varies. We have, the highest number is right around 16. The lowest number, my executive directors of school support, have a much smaller number. They may have four schools, but they take on additional operational duties. So just a traditional supervisory ED on the low end will have about eight schools, and on the high end will have about 15 schools.
I think, I'm really, I'm happy to hear that they're, they are having conversations about sharing best practices, and I just want to sort of emphasize how important I think it is that, you know, considering how much work principals have to do every day, that we work to ensure that they have the time to communicate with one another and learn from one another. You know, in between making sure kids have their masks up and, and, you know, making sure that the closet is stocked, and doing a little bit of contact tracing on the side, you know, all that, just so that they can be together.
Other thoughts or questions? All right, go ahead.
And I think Emily and Rachel answered a lot, but I do want to take another moment. I know we have celebrated them a lot, but I remember Rosebank, I think it was the former principal, she was knocking on doors because the school was in priority status for so long, and I remember Ashley coming to Nashville Prep to kind of learn the best use practices, and like, really getting in the trenches, and so like, really, like, as we think about the priority list that has grown from seven to 14 to 21, and then, but I really want to give a big round of applause for the work that you ladies are doing, because it's making a big difference. And so I'm going to stand up, and I'm going to clap, because I really appreciate it.
Well, I can't help but to just echo those sentiments, because both of these phenomenal educators are in my district. Doctor, I mean, Mrs. Akers was one of the first principals that I actually met with, and she was just, what, six months on the job when I was running, and I could see the, not tired in her face, because she always was glowing, but I could see that she was working diligently to change the perception of the school, to shift the narrative, and to improve academics. And then very shortly after, Mrs. Croft, I met her, and so I feel like we're part of the same cohort, but I do generally see them together. I see them, the other STEAM schools that got the magnet grant, I see them all conversing. I see Dr. Gibbs and Mrs. Kristy Lewis from Lachlan, I see them together often, and so it's been great to shift the narrative in East Nashville, because so often it's inappropriately stated that they're not high-quality seats in East Nashville, but they're nothing but high-quality seats in East Nashville, and we just got to shift that narrative, we've just got to shout from the rooftops. You know, for a while, there were people suggesting that families should flee priority schools, and now we see the great work that has happened when you invest in young people who have just been under-resourced in their community. So it just, it can't be understated how hard they and their staff have worked, because Mrs. Croft and I have had some, some of those uncomfortable conversations where she's just kind of let me know that I need help here and here, and it's those behind the scenes, that behind-the-scenes work that is not broadcast on the board floor, it's not talked about on the news, when educators like Dr. Springer are pulling their teams together to make sure that homeless families have students who, with students who have not been in school in years, get the resources that they need to go to a Rosebank and be on grade level by the time they get there, to get their vaccinations, their immunizations. I mean, it's, it's that kind of everyday work, and I just can't keep stressing that the entire community has to wrap our arms around all of our schools. But thank you all again, I appreciate the understanding that we've gotten about this tiered level support. I had one question about tutors, but I appreciate that, you know, you elevated that. Is there anything else? Is there anything else that we need to be able to do? Is there any other way outside of continuing to advocate, continuing to spread the good news? What can we as a board, as a community, do to better support schools like a Rosebank and Inglewood? I guess that's for you, Dr. Battle, but...
That's a very loaded question.
It is. I mean, we can come back to that later.
And I don't know that we have enough time to really address it tonight, but all the things that you've said above, getting the word out, I mean, phenomenal work is happening in our schools. I'm fortunate that I get to see it every day, but it takes all of us to speak that positivity, that encouragement, that acknowledgement about our students and who they are. We have students who can and will. We have the best and brightest staff working with our students. We have challenges that we have to overcome. We are not where we need to be yet, and I think we have to acknowledge that. We have a lot of work to do, but it's a lot of work that can be done, because we know what to do, and we have the right people in the right places to get it done. So it will, it will take a collective effort, understanding, we have to begin to deeply understand the community that we're serving, all right? And it changes, needs arise, and we have to be responsive to that need daily. So it doesn't stop here. It will take those collective conversations, get into those deep root causes around what we're dealing with, and we cannot do it alone. We need our community to step up, rise up with us, to create spaces for our students to thrive, and to provide the resources for our families to be able to live and provide for themselves and their families right here in Nashville. So let's keep digging deep as a community, understanding that it's not one institution, one, you know, blame around where we are, but knowing where we are, let's commit to not staying there and getting this done together. Lots of work to do, but we can get it done.
Really appreciate you all. Thank you all again. Now we'll move on to governance issues. We have a consent agenda. Is there an amendment to the consent agenda before I accept the motion?
Yes, I'd like to pull off consent agenda, D number five, in Class Today Inc.
All right, so Mrs. Tyler is pulling D five in Class Today Inc. Any other amendments to the agenda as listed? All right, I will entertain a motion to accept the agenda as amended?
Second.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please raise your hand. All right, it's unanimous. Mrs. Tyler, D five in Class Today Inc. Oh, I'm sorry, I will entertain a motion, and then we can open it up for discussion.
Okay. Yes, I guess I move to accept it.
As long as the answers are good. This is what's hard. Can I just make a motion to have discussion on it, and then we can vote on it?
Mrs. Rollberge is nodding yes. Yes, ma'am.
All right, I make a motion for discussion.
It's been seconded. All right, Mrs. Tyler?
I just wanted to know, it says source of funds to be determined. I want to know what that means, and where we are anticipating that to come from.
I'm speaking a little bit on Dr. Griffin's behalf right now. I asked this question earlier. It is our expectation that will come from the new grant that hasn't been, that hasn't been finalized, federal funds for our priority schools from the state, so that's why it says that, but it will be federal funds either way. Our current idea is that it will go there, but again, they haven't finalized that grant application. This is a turnaround grant.
And what happens if we don't get it?
We can shift it to another source of federal funds, it's not a problem, but that's why, I think that's why it says TBD, the same question. It'll be federal funds, it's just the question is exactly which grant.
Okay, thank you. All right, well then I make a motion to approve this five, D five, in Class Today Inc.
amend your motion?
Oh, what? Oh, we didn't...
Withdraw your motion.
Yeah, I want to withdraw the motion to, for discussion, and now I would like to make a motion to accept D five in Class Today as written on the contract.
All right.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, please raise your hand. It's unanimous, so we will move on to A two, a resolution recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month. Mrs. Poopa Walker?
Thank you so much, Chair Buck. So in honor of Hispanic Heritage Month, I'd like to read a resolution. I want to thank Dr. Sevier and other staff for helping me compile some of this information. So, "A resolution recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month and celebrating the heritage and culture of Hispanics in the United States and their immense contributions to our district, our city, and our country. Whereas from September 15, 2021, through October 15, 2021, the United States celebrates Hispanic Heritage Month. And whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month was first observed in 1968 under President Lyndon Johnson, and enacted into law in 1988 as an annual proclamation starting September 15. And whereas this law celebrated Hispanic Americans, the anniversaries of independence for the Latin American countries of Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua, while Mexico and Chile celebrate the 16th and 18th respectively. And whereas the 2020 census estimates the Latino population living in Davidson County at over 98,000, making Latinos 14% of the total population of our city, an increase of 65% over the past decade, and the fastest-growing racial or ethnic group in the city, as well as the country. And whereas currently there are more than 25,000 Latino students in Metro Nashville Public Schools, which represents over 30% of our student enrollment, or more than 1 in 3 public school students in our district, hailing from 25 countries in South and Central America, the Caribbean, and of course, from the United States. Whereas there are approximately 300 Latino teachers and staff in Metro Nashville Public Schools comprising nearly 3% of our employees and who contribute daily to the accomplishments and education of our youth. And whereas the Metropolitan National Board of Education believes that each and every student must be known, and that we celebrate and build upon the strength and knowledge that Hispanic students and staff bring with them to school, including cultural perspectives, lived experiences, practices, and languages. And whereas throughout history and into current day, Hispanics have made significant contributions in fields such as education, government, science, law, medicine, entertainment, literature, sports, and the military, thereby enhancing and shaping the vibrancy of the United States with centuries-old traditions that reflect multi-ethnic and multicultural customs of their communities. Whereas Latinos harbor a deep commitment to family and community, and a perseverance to succeed and contribute to the betterment of our city and our community. Therefore, be it resolved that we, the Metropolitan National Board of Education, recognize the celebration of Hispanic Heritage Month, and this year's national theme, Esperanza, which means hope, a celebration of Hispanic heritage and hope. Furthermore, hold and esteem the integral role of Hispanics and heritage of Hispanics in the culture and identity of our city and schools. Furthermore, urge our staff and schools to observe Hispanic Heritage Month and the appropriate programs and activities that celebrate the contributions of Hispanics in the United States." What happens? Do we...
Move to approval.
Move to approve.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I just want to recognize, my district has a large population of Hispanic community and Latinx community, and I'd just like to thank my colleague, board member Poopa Walker, for recognizing this. When I spoke one time at Glencliff High School, I said that my wish is after whoever succeeds me will be a first-generation immigrant from various cultures, not just one, that follow me, and that would be more representative of the district. And so I just hope that, that an M N P S graduate will come and succeed me whenever that time comes, and will be someone of that community, just to truly represent of what this great democracy is, and how it's important to have all cultures be recognized and be represented in our democracy in this country, and that their culture is valued in here, and that they have a civic place that's welcome.
Therefore, Mrs. Elrod?
I wanted to say that both Ms. Player-Peters and I, this district does consist of a lot of that population, and we are so appreciative of you bringing it to us. I think it is also worthwhile to make sure that we note that our colleague, board member Poopa Walker, is the first Latina board member that we have, or Latinx board member that we have had for the school system, and so it is... For the sole state, that's right. Thank you for correcting me. So it is, it is a beautiful, full moment I like to see. So I appreciate you bringing it, and I thank you.
And I think this might be just a good time to remind the community that there is redistricting going on, and that we've been working with the Planning Commission to elevate things like cluster alignment to districts, making sure that homogeneous districts are no longer a norm, or, I'm sorry, not homogeneous, but that we're being aware of disenfranchised communities being better represented across our city, making sure that they're not broken up. And so please know that planning or discussion and opportunities for feedback will be available to the community beginning in about two weeks, so be on the lookout. Again, this is coming from the Planning Commission, this is specifically about school board redistricting. It's not necessarily around cluster redistricting, but will certainly impact you and whoever represents you at this board table. So thank you again, and I'm not going to steal your thunder, but I just might have Glencliff in my district in the next couple of weeks, I'm just...
It's like a mile from my house.
Yeah, sorry. Sorry, sis, that's how the cookie might crumble, so be ready for feedback. All right, so be there no more discussion. All in favor for accepting this resolution, please raise your hand. All right, it's unanimous. We will move on to announcements. We'll begin again with our youngest board members, our youngest board member, Ava Neeser, since we have a young adult amongst us now. Ava Neeser, any announcements for this week or month? All right, Mrs. Poopa Walker?
Yeah, I want to start by acknowledging Janaya Birdsong, who was a student at Hillsborough High School that we lost much too young this week in gun violence, and our hearts go out to her family, her friends, the Hillsborough community. The family has a GoFundMe page, I'll retweet it out here after the meeting, to help cover costs of burial. The family's struggling to cover those costs, and so our hearts are with that entire community today, and I know everyone here is thinking about them. So sending them lots of love and prayers. Want to reiterate, happy birthday, Angelie, turning 18. Whoop, whoop. And also want to just thank Dr. Battle, I want to reiterate that this partnership with Vanderbilt is a national model, it's a game changer, and I think that sometimes it's easy for, at least for me, to overlook the fact that here we are, contact tracing, dealing with a pandemic, dealing with all of the things, bus drivers, all the things, and yet we still are doing really important monumental systemic things to change the way we operate, and this research partnership, as Dr. Changis said, something he's wanted to see for nearly a quarter of a century. Sorry. And, you know, I just, number one education program in the country is in this city, and it is now going to harness, we're going to harness all of that energy and brilliance for our students and our faculty and our staff, and so I just thank you, Dr. Battle, for making that a reality in the middle of all the other things that you're doing, so. And then I want to take a privilege, because I did this last year, and I try to do this periodically, I want to just read a poem for Hispanic Heritage Month, and this one is by Jorge Luis Borges, who's probably the most important Latin American author of all time, it was from Argentina. He wrote this poem shortly before he died, it was originally written in Spanish, and I want to read this one because I think it's important for us in this pandemic, maybe, at least for me, I'll speak for myself, to think about these words. So he wrote, this was in 1985, more or less that he wrote it. "If I could live again my life in the next, I'll try to make more mistakes. I won't try to be so perfect, I'll be more relaxed, I'll be more full than I am now. In fact, I'll take fewer things seriously, I'll be less hygienic, I'll take more risks, I'll take more trips, I'll watch more sunsets, I'll climb more mountains, I'll swim more rivers, I'll go to more places I've never been. I'll eat more ice cream and mess less lima beans. I'll have more real problems and less imaginary ones. I was one of those people who lived prudent and prolific lives, each minute of his life, of course, that I had moments of joy, but if I could go back, I'll try to have only good moments. If you don't know, that is what life is made of, so don't lose the now. I was one of those who never goes anywhere without a thermometer, without a hot water bottle, without an umbrella, without a parachute. If I could live again, I will travel light. If I could live again, I'll try to work barefoot, in my bare feet, at the beginning of spring until the end of autumn. I'll ride more carts, I'll watch more sunrises, and play with more children. If I have the life to live, but I'm now 85, and I know that I am dying."
Beautiful.
That's for all of us.
Thank you, Mrs. Poopa Walker. Mr. Little?
Wanted to highlight that the state of Donaldson-Hermitage event, where the
Wanted to highlight that the state of Donaldson Hermann Titch event, where it'll go over political but also education, it'll be this Wednesday. It'll be virtual, online. I'll be posting on my page with more details. Wanted to thank you to Mindy and Nicole of Dupont Hadley and Two Rivers Middle School for inviting me but facilitating the community meetings. I think it was really engaging. And then also, big shout out, I think they're still here, to the PAC members who got a chance to come on this past Saturday and just talk about all things regarding parental involvement, as well as Ms. Patterson, who is a teacher at McGavick, who really talked about the work-based learning, got a lot of good feedback, and parents just fired up to know some of the different graduate tracks they could take. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Elrod.
Thank you. First is a committee report. We had a naming of schools committee meeting this afternoon at 3:30 to discuss the naming of schools for what we're calling High School West, also known as Hillwood, or in some circles, Bellevue High. So we are going to be, during that meeting, we discussed, we got some community input, excuse me, from three listed individuals that are on that agenda. They spoke to us, they provided us materials. In case you were not able to be present, as a colleague, there are plenty of packets of information for us to retain and to look through that are inside the conference room behind me. So if you will please get those and review them. We will be having a community meeting regarding community input for these, for this community, excuse me. We will be having a community meeting to discuss the name change for the new facility about the week of October 18th. That will be announced, and of course, additional information will be provided about how to attend and provide that input, be it through Ms. Tyler or through those meetings that you attend. Lastly, let's see, the Overton PAC met last night. Beatty Hines and Don Johnson are involved, not only in the Overton PAC or the Overton Cluster PAC, but also inside the school-wide PAC. And so I appreciated seeing them both last night and tonight, and I appreciate the work that was done to have a PAC meeting for us to all be involved in. And then I also want to thank Ms. Croft and Ms. Akers for being here tonight. I think to add to the point that we always see them together, the last time I saw them was together at the MPEF documentary viewing that Ms. Bugs was at and was at the roundtable for. So it is quite nice to see that our leadership are not only friends, but they are also colleagues and that they help each other, not only in their professional life but personal life as well. And that's a real testament to the culture that's inside of our schools and the leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Player Peters?
No, I just want to just thank the work of my colleague, Ms. Masters, with the meeting we had before the PAC parent. That was a good experience to have that merge and hope to see you soon and hope I can help you recruit the Glencliff Cluster Coordinator.
Thank you. Mrs. Masters.
So nice. Yeah, I wanted to once again thank everyone who, I mean, the PAC especially, the work y'all are doing is amazing. I wanted to thank Ashford Hughes and Dr. Changus for taking the time for us to put you on the hot seat to answer questions. Thank Dr. Battle for agreeing to our wacky plan and letting us borrow some staff members and the entire board also for agreeing to step down and sit in the audience and be a part of the meeting. It was exciting to see it come together. And once again, the PAC does continue to seek some cluster representatives, and Berthina Navah McKenney is the PAC representative who is helping to do that recruitment effort. I also wanted to say, I had a really fun experience yesterday morning going to Dan Mills Elementary School. I was invited along as we talked about fitting fifth grade back into the school. That is also where both my children attended elementary school, so Dr. Kovach had a front-row seat to my reunion tour throughout Dan Mills. So I think he's already gone, but we were there for about an hour and a half, and there was, there was a lot of chit-chatting among all of the different teachers and everything. But it was exciting to see that in process and realize like this is really happening. And the planning that's going in to that, to ensure that all of the students currently in the buildings are being served, and then we're also making room to bring fifth grade back in, and then that we're also, you know, thinking about not just academics, but making sure that they have opportunities for intramural sports and just all kinds of cool things going on with that. So I was very appreciative of that invitation. And I also wanted to mention, I forgot, last meeting, to say that the Insurance Trust had met, and I represent the board on that group. And we passed at the last meeting some of what we had determined in that meeting, contract-wise, but I just have to say it, we have the best benefits package. I have worked for the state, I have worked for metro government, so I've seen what the packages look like. I just think it's one of the most amazing things that we do for our teachers and staff is provide that level of benefits and support. And I just think that's really important, and it makes me feel good that that's a way that we support our teachers. So I think that's all I have right now.
Thank you. Mrs. Tyler.
Yes, I just want to let everybody know that this weekend, coming weekend, is Hillwood Alumni Weekend. On October 1st, there's a football game, and there will be a tailgate at Hillwood from 4:00 to 6:00 with the football game at 7:00 to follow, and there will be halftime recognitions. And then on Saturday, the 2nd, you can come back to campus and get a campus tour between 9:00 and 11:00 a.m. with a picnic in the stadium to follow. So feel free to come out and celebrate with your fellow alumni and enjoy some time together. And then as Board Member Elrod said, we have started that discussion about what we're going to be naming our new high school. We'll be sending an email survey out in addition to the in-person meeting that we will have. I'm going to give it a week or so, so I'm not doing it immediately, so that anybody who has not given me their email address and wants to be on there can let me know and sign up for that. You can go to my website, abigailtyler.com, A-B-I-G-A-I-L-T-Y-L-O-R dot com. And then you would just go to contact and send a message saying that you want to be on the email list. And I'm also going to share the survey on social media as well. So just to kind of let you know, I want to make sure that everybody who wants to have a voice gets a voice and that you are all heard. So I look forward to discussing this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Tyler. Angelique.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you for all the birthday wishes. It's truly a gift to be here and make a difference the first day after my birthday. I guess my first real announcement is I wanted to extend a congratulations to all the students who qualified to be a semifinalist for the National Merit Scholarship. And with that, I urge my fellow seniors to get on your college applications, November 1st deadline for early decision, and November 15th deadline for early action is coming up. If we really think about it, we really only have a month. Please do not procrastinate, as I do know what that feels like. And I hope every student, especially you're my seniors, the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to remind everyone that there will not be a meeting the second Tuesday of the month, as that will be smack dab in the middle of fall break. So remember, fall break technically begins October, Friday, October 8th, and extends through Friday, October 15th. We look forward to seeing you all after that. I again want to just elevate, I have not told the story yet, or began to tell the story earlier about Dr. Springer and her team meeting over the weekend during the summer to help a family whose children had not been in school in years, get them immunizations, get them school clothes, help them find housing, and get them prepared for the first day of school, literally days before school started. I just, this isn't to pick on them, but to remind the community at large that everybody's child really are ours to love on and to support. And so I appreciate that kind of, that level of support that MMPS continues to offer to all of our families. I was able to spend some time with Mrs. Tyler at the state for their special session. I'll just leave that there. Just remember that there are different levels of government that we should always be tapping into when it comes to education, when it comes to funding, resourcing, policies that are created. It has to be implemented by our educators, but families, please remember, the legislative session begins technically in January, but you can begin reaching out to your legislators now. I want to elevate that MDHA will have an early years hub meeting on September 29th, I'm sorry, on tomorrow, September 29th, at 1600 Riverside Drive at 12 noon. So if you are someone that is just interested in better supporting that early year space, that kind of birth-to-age-five space, making sure that students and families are supported or you have a place that you want to interject yourself, please feel free to show up that day. I also want to remind the community that the participatory budgeting season for that kind of northern part of our district, around 37208, 37218 Bordeaux area, is still open. And this is particularly important for students as young as age 14, as they will be able to cast a vote as to how that $2 million in federal funding will be spent. So again, this is a participatory budgeting process that is coming through the mayor's office. Children as young as 14 will be able to vote, only if they live in that Bordeaux 372018 area. But anyone in the community can make suggestions or just be part of that budgeting process in some way, because I could see this happening in other districts in years to come. So just something to be aware of. I want to continue to remind you that redistricting will be happening, so be on the lookout for information from board members, from the Planning Commission, and even potentially from the State House and State Senate, as they will be redistricting also. Again, this may not necessarily impact you immediately, but it certainly impacts who represents you at different levels of government.
Academic clusters do not line up with the pro con.
Yes, that was a great, a great point. Academic clusters or your school clusters do not always align with the cluster that you vote for. So if you live in the pro con cluster, I represent the pro con cluster, but you may very well live in Dr. Gentry's district. That may not be the case much longer, but please just be aware of it. It's something of note. And you know what? Be there no further business. I hope you all enjoy your fall break. Please rest. We love you, we thank you. Good night.
Trying to take Glencliff away from me. I didn't even want to.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again or for more information about this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.